All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this Tuesday, September 15th, for the Culver City Chambers City Council Candidate Forum. I am Colin Diaz, the President and CEO of the Chamber, and I'd like to thank all of our candidates for joining us today. Just for you all that are listening, I wanted to share kind of some of the ground rules and the flow of the day. So we will start with the candidates. We'll have up to three minutes to give an introduction of themselves and share anything that they'd like on the front end. We'll then have a series of questions that will be asked to candidates. Because we have so many candidates, not every candidate will be asked every question. In fact, there will be three candidates that are asked, each of the questions that are asked throughout. Should we have time at the end, we will address some of the questions that are in the chat. So with that, thank you all for joining. We kind of did a random hole by straw, so we will go for the initial three minutes for introduction. We'll start with Yasmin, and then we will go with Darrell and Yoran for the first three. So you've got three minutes to give an introduction and share anything that you'd like.
Well, good afternoon. I hope everyone is well. I thank you so much, Colin Diaz and the entire Chamber, for having this forum for us. Thank you. My name is Yasmin Imani-McMoran. During the day, I serve, well, a little bit of today, right? I serve as the interim Dean of Students and Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at USC Gould School of Law. For our city, I serve as the Vice Chair for our General Plan Advisory Committee, and I just wrapped up working on the Equity Strategic Plan Planning Committee with our school district. Super proud of the equity report that we put out last month. Check it out if you haven't seen it. And I'm a mom, I'm an attorney, and I love living in Culver City. I would be incredibly honored to serve as your Culver City Council member. And pretty much my vision is for Culver City to be a place where whether you live, work, learn, or play here, you're met with a community that embraces you, where you can feel safe and supported. And that goes, of course, for our business community as well. And so how we'll do this is by centering equity and inclusion in every city policy, making sure our budget truly reflects our values. And we really want to make sure that we are promoting safe and thriving neighborhoods. You know, the reason why equity is such a thing in my work and my personal life is we want to make sure that policy works for everyone. So how we'll do this is advocating for housing policies that support renters and work to prevent homelessness, and also, of course, providing a path to be housed for our currently unhoused neighbors. It also means adopting inclusive mobility policies to make our city more accessible for all members of our community, including folks with disabilities. I support reducing our police budget and reallocating funds toward social programs that address community needs, especially in regards to mental health, folks who are experiencing domestic violence, and for our unhoused community as well. I will promote policies that support our local economy while protecting the environment, and including programs that equip businesses to adapt socially responsible and climate-friendly business practices. You know, and if elected to council, I will fight hard to make our city an inclusive city, and I hope that I can count on your support in this journey. So if you're curious or you'd like to learn more, I want to, of course, be respectful of time. Please visit votemcmorin.com to learn more, and I look forward to all of the questions. Thank you so much for allowing me this introduction.
Hi, thanks again to the whole chamber for hosting this event. This is such an important forum every time we have an election here. I'm Darrell Menthe, and I'm running for city council because I love Culver City. I'm a lawyer with a small practice in downtown Culver City. My wife Sarah and I have lived here for 14 years. Our two children were born here. Vivian's in seventh grade at the middle school, and James is in Lynn Howe in fourth grade. I live and work in downtown Culver City. I am a member of the Chamber. I'm probably best known around town as the president of the Downtown Business Association, especially because I get to host the annual tree lighting every year. I'm also the Vice Chair of Culver City's Finance Advisory Committee. I really believe in Culver City. You know, these are extraordinary times, and the city does face serious challenges right now with the twin shocks of pandemic and recession. I believe if we're going to recover, we need to keep thinking big. What I mean thinking big, I do mean bold choices. You know, I worked really hard this summer with the downtown businesses and the city staff to get the outdoor dining expansion and street closures in downtown city, and I'm proud that it worked. And now we have this wonderful, safe place in the heart of the heart of Greenland, and it's alive at night. If you haven't been downtown, you should go. Thinking big also means building more housing, affordable housing, especially in commercial transit-oriented districts. I think we need to commit to a greener future. I will work to make every Culver City neighborhood walkable and bikeable, and to connect our neighborhoods to each other. We also need to make sure that there are other transit options available for workers to get to and through our city, because more cars always means more traffic, and we have plenty of traffic. I also believe that large corporations, the ones that have moved here, should pay their fair share for city services. Our city budget's almost doubled in the last 10 years, and these costs should not all be borne by homeowners and small businesses every time. You know, I come to this race with a unique set of experiences. My heart and my values are grounded in a progressive vision of an equitable, inclusive community. But I also believe I have the business background to build a broader consensus. I understand the basic principle that a thriving business community is necessary for everything that we want to do in Culver City. It is possible to be a progressive business leader in Culver City, and that's who I am. I look forward to your questions and for the rest of tonight's forum. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm Yoran Erikson, the current mayor and former chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, and longtime resident and small business owner in Culver City. I lived here and owned my business with my wife Britta for several decades. I'm running for reelection to continue my work of improving Culver City. But there are a few specific priorities that I hope to touch on in detail tonight. First, we must continue to set policy for effective COVID-19 response and recovery. This pandemic has affected our local businesses tremendously, from mom-and-pop bakeries to multinational organizations with large offices in Culver City. We must do everything we can as a city to help our business community to not only survive this pandemic, but continue to thrive. As a small business owner myself, I know firsthand how devastating the COVID-19 pandemic has been, and I can assure you that I will do everything in my power to help our business thrive, which will help our entire community prosper. Just as important is the well-being of our Culver City residents. In recent months, I led the charge in creating the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, supporting over 100 families to keep their homes, while also helping landlords meet their bottom lines. And I am helping Organized Feed Culver, which has given over 15,000 free meals to food insecure people while supporting local restaurants. I believe we must allow our businesses to open as soon as it's safely possible so that we can mitigate the economic damage to our business community that present crisis has caused. Homelessness is another issue that Culver City needs to address, and during my time on the council, I supported the creation of a new homeless coordinator who is working across the city departments and coordinating with the county to start getting a handle on the issue of homelessness in Culver City. Additionally, it's our emergency services that keep our businesses and livelihoods safe, which is why I believe that we need to support our first responders in having the adequate tools necessary to be effective partners in our community's success. Finally, I want to talk about the economic future of Culver City. Since being elected to the city council four years ago, our community has made some amazing strides. We have attracted new businesses and are widely recognized as one of the hottest office markets in the state. I'm proud to have led the way in creating the Five-Year Economic Development Action Plan for Culver City, and I will continue to fight tax increases that are harmful to our local businesses. As a small business owner myself, I understand the critical importance of balancing a strong-growing and vibrant business community that also maintains the small-town charm that has made Culver City such an attractive place to live and work. I believe actions speak louder than words. These are just some examples of the policies and ideas I'm proud to have brought to our city and look forward to create discussions, do a great discussion tonight, and I hope to gain your support. Thank you.
Very, hello, everyone. My name is Freddie Puzza, and I'm running for Culver City Council. Thank you to Colin and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this candidate's forum today. Thank you to Schiff for showing up and talking about these issues and learning more about our local government and our great city. I first moved to Culver City in Fox Hills in 2011. I moved here for the location. It's only four miles from my work, the open spaces, the great restaurants, and the people. I've developed many professional and personal and some crossover relationships in the city. I work at Loyola Marymount University. I've worked there for the past 15 years. I do community relations. This means I work with neighbors, local businesses, and government on strategic initiatives. As part of my work, I'm actually a board member of the LAX Coastal Chamber of Commerce. And last Saturday, I hosted a community conversation about small businesses and creative economy, which featured the president and CEO of that chamber. Through that membership in that chamber, I'm able to hear about the concerns of small business owners, and I'm active in organizing and planning events that help uplift small businesses in our community, and I hope to bring this experience and energy to Culver City. I'm a champion for the community. I'm an ears-to-the-ground and grassroots person who shows up to take action. I'm involved in many organizations in and out of Culver City. Recently, I volunteer for the West Side Pacific Villages every Friday, delivering food to our seniors and our high-risk populations. I'm a member of the Fox Hills Neighborhood Association, Protect Culver City Renters, the Culver City Action Network, Culver City Historical Society, among many others. I currently am a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I previously served on the Committee on Homelessness. Culver City residents all want safe and healthy streets, stable neighborhoods, and pride in the places we call home, even if we fiercely debate the best path to follow on public safety, housing, and how to guide a recovery. I'm running because I have the skillset to navigate change in this historic moment. I'm a listener who's not afraid to take action. I'm a community builder who brings people together to take action, and I do this through the lens of equity and inclusion. If elected, I'd be the first openly LGBTQ candidate or council member, and I'll work with our business, community, and elected leaders to ensure every resident is part of our post-pandemic renaissance. Thank you, and looking forward to the conversation.
I'd like to thank the Chamber for holding this forum. I'm Robert Zergulis. I've lived in Culver City for 36 years and appreciate the special small-town atmosphere and great police and fire department protecting our city. I'm an entrepreneur, educator, and a Realtor. I believe an entrepreneur is a person who collects experiences and combines them to create something new. I've gained worldwide experiences through my travels around the world three times and visiting over 85 countries and establishing an import-export business dealing with decorative accessories in Culver City. As an educator, I've been a substitute teacher in the Culver City Unified School District, specializing in dealing with children with special needs. As a Realtor, I now manage my own rental property and an Airbnb. I'm a UCLA graduate with a master's in business and know how to deal with major problems affecting our city. Now, the reason I'm running for city council is because there is a big elephant in this room that a lot of people are afraid to talk about. I'm talking about the defamation and defunding of our great Culver City Police Department by hypocritical groups that hate our police and want to emasculate them by cutting their budget by 50%. The Culver City Police saved Culver City millions of dollars by proactively stopping the raging mob of looters and rioters that ravaged Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, and Hollywood. Less we forget, the Culver City Police also saved us during the 1992 Rodney King riots. I remember how terrified it was about losing my business to the rioters then, but I was not going to be intimidated. I protected my business and stood up to them. As a city council member, I will not be intimidated by the cancel culture crowd that wants to destroy our police department and your business if you don't accede to their demands. I find it ironic that I see many well-intentioned people putting up lawn signs that say, "There is no place for hate here." Where do you think the hate is coming from? I've been unjustly called a racist because I support the Culver City Police. I will not be intimidated and answer to them. I will start calling anybody who's calling me a racist, unjustly calling me a racist, I am going to call them, I'm pushing back and calling them a race-bater, and I'm encouraging any business that is being extorted or intimidated to put up a Black Lives Matter sign, I encourage you to stand up to them, because the Black Lives Matter is a great slogan, but it's been hijacked by an organization that is a Marxist hate group. And so I want to educate people about this organization, and I want our police to get a bonus for saving our city millions of dollars. They shouldn't be slapped in the face for saving our city. We need extra funds for other services, granted. I'm for that, too. Again, I am encouraging people to push back and educate people to realize, "Look up the organization Black Lives Matter and see that they're a Marxist hate group" who go and say, "Pigs in a blanket, fry them like bacon." Is that who you want to be associated with? No. And I think that anybody who's calling for the defunding of our police is being irresponsible, and that's why I think they will be irresponsible in their actions as a city council, because the police and fire department bind our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin, and thank you to the Chamber for hosting this forum today. It's really great to be here with all of you. My name is Heather Mullen, and I'm running to be your city council member. I work full-time right now as a family law paralegal over in Playa Vista, and I love what I do. It's my goal to bring back our community's faith in the city council, to restore fiscal responsibility, and to promote proper budgets for our police and fire departments. One of my main focuses is helping small businesses and allowing them to flourish and thrive even after COVID-19 is finished. It's my belief that by listening to all members of our community, not just any one particular faction or one group, we can learn more and grow more as a city and do it together. I'm a woman of my word. This isn't simply politics. This is real life. These businesses are the dreams of my neighbors, and ensuring that they thrive and prosper is one of my main focuses. They have to survive in order for our city to survive. I bring a fresh, young perspective to this council, and I'm excited to work with everyone on making our city a better place. I'd like to invite you all to listen to my Small Business Saturday talks with local businesses and find out what they have to say, because a lot of them are members of the Chamber, and they have really good ideas and inputs on how we can help them. So it's my hope that by listening and working together, we'll go through this together, because we have to do this together. Thank you, Colin.
Thanks, Colin. Appreciate it. My name is Dr. Kinken G., and I'm a 30-year resident of Culver City and a practicing neurologist for that duration of time. Originally, I came to this country with my parents as an immigrant when I was a teenager. As an immigrant, I came to understand the financial hurdles kids face going through college, graduate, and medical school. As a woman and a small business owner, I have developed an appreciation for the challenges we face navigating the rules and regulations of both medicine and business. As a graduate of UCLA Extension's Sustainability Certificate Program, I bring a database with me that honors both job creation and sustainability in the same breath. Progress in the state of New York has shown us that we must first get the COVID infection rate down, after which we can safely open businesses and schools. We must do the same in Culver City so that we can achieve our economic potential and restore opportunities for success. Thank you for your attention.
Forgot to mention something at the start or conclusion of introductions. There is an eighth candidate that is in the city council race that was planning on joining us tonight, Albert Vera, who has property and another business that's been impacted by the fires. So he's actually had just an emergency, is not going to be able to join us tonight. So I forgot to mention that, and I apologize. The next portion will be questions that were posed by a combination of businesses in our community as well as various stakeholders through the Chamber and the Chamber Board. The topics will range the city and general plan update, the COVID-19 and the pandemic, taxes and finance, police, business sentiment, as well as housing and homelessness. And we've selected assignments for questions randomly, and there's going to be two minutes per candidate, up to two minutes to respond. For the first question, we're looking for responses from Yasmin, Kinken, and then Heather. And the question is, "Given the great uncertainty of the pandemic, what are your thoughts on the timing of the general plan update and whether the city should postpone or proceed with its current timeline?"
So I'm incredibly excited about the general plan process. It's been something that council has been talking about, thinking about since 2018. I think that was when I was officially appointed to it, and we didn't get started until 2019. But I'm incredible, I mean, we took, you know, just adjusting for COVID, so we took a little break, but we are back in full effect. And just last night, we had the presentation of UCLA Luskin students who sort of were talking about mobility, complete streets, affordable housing, sort of all of these things that we have been lifting up and discussing as our, like, 20-plus body. So I'm incredibly excited. We are still, I think today is the last day to complete the Public Safety Survey, which is going to also dovetail the conversation that will be on the 17th, that's at 6:00 p.m. So I encourage everyone present here to attend the Public Safety Conversation and please also to fill out the survey. But this is what, you know, this is a moment for this work. I mean, we can't stop planning just because we're in crisis. I'm incredibly motivated and excited about 2045, which is what we are, you know, thinking about and reimagining what Culver City will look like and how we'll serve our community. So I'm excited. I'm not daunted, and we're doing great work on the committee. I hope I answered all the questions.
Thank you, Yasmin. Kinken, same question.
Yeah, I think that this is a great question, because if you look at propositions that were written before COVID, they kind of look dated. An example would be Proposition 15, where we have a situation where the commercial and industrial buildings are going to be brought up to the up-to-date market rate taxation. It was fine when it was written maybe three or four years ago, but with the COVID staring us in the face and climate change as well, if you were around the city this past weekend where, when the sun was orange and the sky was gray, that would compel you to solve the climate change issues immediately. It was emergent, and it's still emergent. And first things first, as a physician, I must have to say that you need to address the COVID infection first and the climate change, which are pummeling us, giving us a one-two punch. So I would have to say that we need to address first things first and address climate change and COVID-related issues first and foremost. That way, we can go ahead, go forward with the other pressing issues of the time. But we need to survive. We need to continue life as we had imagined it, and I think our health and safety come first. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Heather.
Thank you, Colin. You know, that question is something that I've thought a lot about and something that I've discussed with several residents around here. I think that so much is changing so fast, and things may not go back to the way they were before. I think there's a lot of changes with business. A lot of more people were working from home. I know in the complex where I live in Fox Hills, a lot of people have moved out to other states because they are now permanently telecommuting. I think a lot of things in our city are changing fairly rapidly right now. So I would like to see us delay the general plan for a couple of reasons. Number one being, of course, that we have all of these changes happening, and I'd like to see things settle and see really where we are and check the pulse of the city before we commit to further changes. The fact of being, right now, with everything being online, you have a large group of residents of Culver City who are feeling very left out and not included in this process. Not everyone has online access. Not everyone has the ability to get onto these meetings. And with all of the breaks and the different time changes and the WebEx versus Zoom and everything else, it's created a lot of questions on this. So I would like to see us delay it, not, you know, too much, but I would like to see us at least have a good community conversation about it and see where our city is at when all of this has passed.
Moving to our second question, this will be for Yoran, Darrell, and Freddie. Over the past few years, homelessness has been a growing concern for our city. What are your plans to address the increased homeless population and the blithe and safety concerns from encampments set in public spaces and under freeways?
Well, the first thing we have done in the city was we realized that this affected a lot of different departments, fire department, police department, or Public Works, or sanitation. And so we created a homeless coordinator who now coordinates all the work within our city, including the housing department. We have contracted with a number of different service providers, and we are looking at extending and increasing those contracts. And I think that you have to have those resources available so you get the total wraparound service, because the feedback we're getting from our first responders, fire, and police who are out there a lot is that a lot of our homeless population has either drug or mental problem or both. And if we don't address those issues, we really don't get to the core of what we need to do. The next thing is we need to start figuring out how we're going to start getting shelters that we can rely on. And if there are places in our city where we can build shelters, there is a fellow judge done in Orange County who has ruled now, two times actually, that you should consider 60% of the people in your homelessness count as being Jermaine, and you need to provide that number of beds. And I think that's where we are, start to work and to figuring out how we can provide those beds. But currently, we are using a couple of NGOs, and I support that. I support it to triple the budget to St. Joseph's Center, who is in our city every day and is a complete wraparound service with everything. And, but I think that our need for getting some housing built, and there are a few, we have the Virginia Lot. We have a few other places that I think is suitable to start exploring those. So I will continue to push, but we also need to realize that we need to bring the whole region and the county with us. And the county is falling short right now in a lot of these issues, which is then putting the problem on our shoulders. But we cannot solve, we need to do it together with Santa Monica, West LA, Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, the whole area and the county. And that's one thing I've been working on within the Independent City Association, because we primarily work with public safety, to start figuring out how we can move that forward. We have our West Side Cog, but it's really a regional solution that we need to put in place. And as a city, we have proposed a few regional solutions of different type of housing, temporary housing, and we're trying to get buy-in from our sister city around us so we can actually start moving forward. It comes down to financing.
Thank you very much. We'll go Darrell next.
Well, thank you for the question. You know, the homeless population, the unhoused population, it's not a monolithic population. And this is a problem that has been decades in the making, and I'm afraid we won't be able to solve the problem in a short period of time. And I think we have to recognize that, in many ways, it's a moral crisis. And that moral crisis is that we are such a wealthy city, and yet we have people living on our streets. And that's something we need to sort of commit to change. And I appreciate work that's been done so far to try to do that. You know, I believe in housing first, because I think at the end of the day, homelessness is a housing problem. You know, it is true that substance abuse and mental illness are prevalent among our homeless population, but those are usually the most visible people. And the truth is, you know, we don't have more people that are mentally ill or abusing substances here than they do in, say, Charlotte, North Carolina. or Madison, Wisconsin, but we have the homeless problem. And the problem is not that people are having substance abuse problems. The problem is that they can't afford a place to live. And so we need to commit ourselves to long-term solutions that increase housing and then short-term solutions. The short-term solutions, Mayor Erickson mentioned some of them as well. Also, also modular housing. There's other possibilities of micro housing. There's things that we can do to give people the opportunity to find a way to live and get the services that they need. Because once somebody is living under the 405, you're not going to be able to get them any of the social or mental other services that they need to break that cycle. So it is a huge problem and I think we need to commit ourselves to doing both short and long-term things to solve it.
Thank you, Daryl. Freddie, same question. And you're muted.
My turn for that. Thank you for this question. It's actually, you know, I, I was a, served on the Committee on Homelessness, but before that I did communities, I did direct service on Skid Row. And I think that direct service is the compassionate act. But then I started to realize, you know, the regional and the local stakes that, that the regional and the local governments have a play in solving this issue. So that's why I applied for the Committee on Homelessness. It was around the time when we received, we first received money from Measure H, the motel conversion and the Section 8 turnover. I do believe that housing is a human right. We should look at a housing-first model. We are in a pandemic. The priority right now should be preventing displacement. The short term for addressing the unhoused is looking at idea of shared housing. This is the idea where the city or organization buys a, buys an existing building, home, and then rehabs it and a group of unhoused people live there together. Of course, adhering to health and safety guidelines right now. I think that the motel conversion is going to be a possibility during the pandemic or in the subsequent years, especially with the state funding that was allotted towards this program. And then finally, I think the ADU program could be a possible alternative for this in the short term, seeing that there's funding from the city as well, as well as from Measure H to create ADUs. The long-term, of course, we have to look at permanent supportive housing. All of these programs have to include wraparound services. It's much less expensive to house someone than it is to send money on police and emergency services. And it's really a values proposition at the end of the day. What kind of society do we want to build? A punitive one that, you know, puts people through a revolving door of getting tickets, going to jail, possibly escalating to violence? Or do we want to create programs and support people, house them and uplift them to give them opportunities to succeed socially and economically? Thank you.
Thank you very much. A lot of you in your intro mentioned the pandemic and the impact that it's had across our community. So this question is for Robert, Yasmin, and Heather. In your opinion, what is the number one thing, or number one thing that you see affecting the business community with regards to COVID or to the pandemic? So we'll start with Robert, then go to Yasmin and then Heather.
Well, I, I think that small businesses are being treated unfairly in, in, with all these regulations. You know, for instance, the health spa, if, if people can have social distancing and masks, I don't see why they can't use, go, go to the health spa. That's, that's like a small, you know, that's, it's unfair for other small businesses competing against these big box places like Target, which allows people to go in there. I am totally in favor of opening up the economy, especially for small businesses and taking away all the restrictions against them as long as they practice social distancing and, you know, have masks. I do commend, you know, the, the opening up of downtown, having the restaurants, being able to, to, you know, take over the streets. And it, it has a nice festive atmosphere. So I'm in, totally in favor of supporting small businesses that have been discriminated against in this COVID, COVID experience because they're, they're the ones that are hurting. And that, that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you very much. Yasmin, same question.
Thank you, Colin. So I'm not a small business owner, but based on what I'm seeing, we want to make sure that folks stay healthy. And we also want to make sure that folks can thrive, that our businesses can thrive and remain the essential part of our community that, you know, attracted many of us in terms of the newcomers like me to this area, right? How do we make sure that folks can thrive during this time? So I think we have to listen to science. We have to make sure, you know, I love, Daryl mentioned this earlier, but making sure that we can see more of what's being done in the downtown area across, you know, Culver City, making sure that we can see more folks utilizing sidewalks in a safe way, making sure that it's still accessible to folks with disabilities, right? So making sure that we're not, we're being mindful of all members of our community. But I like to see more of that. I would like to see, this came up last night in the city council meeting, but making sure that if folks are struggling with rent, that we have a strong policy on the city level. I know that the state level is having their own for, that we have to follow for the residential repayment terms, but making sure that our city policy is also as strong as it can be just for some, and I know this isn't for all businesses, but if folks are struggling, making sure that there is lenient repayment so we can make sure that our businesses will remain. But I also, you know, I always say, let's talk to the folks who are experiencing the pain. So I'm always open to hear ideas from folks and what will work with them, making sure that we're safe, making sure that folks can be successful and that we're getting through this together. Thanks for the question.
Thank you very much. Heather, same question.
Yes, thank you, Colin. You know, with my small business Saturday, I've, I've sat down with different types of business, a restaurant, a boutique, and a spa. And I've asked them, you know, what can the city do better to assist you after COVID? How have you been impacted? And it's really put everything into a fresh perspective. For me, not being a small business owner, I don't know what they're going through unless I get down on that level and speak to them. So what I found out from a lot of people is the city dropped the ball. And a lot of them felt that they didn't get the proper information. They would call City Hall, nobody would call them back for weeks on end. And I think that we need to work together with the Chamber of Commerce. I know Yoran has done a good job with his Monday meetings with the chamber. But like I've said, the chamber is our eyes and ears, they're our boots on the ground. One woman said to me, I waited two weeks to get a call back from City Hall and nobody called me. I called the chamber, within 24 hours, my phone call was answered. All of my questions were answered and I could continue on with my business. And I think that's a really powerful statement. I think that we definitely have to work together. We can't leave anybody out. A lot of people who aren't in downtown are feeling very left out. And ultimately, something as simple as the city saying, hey, do you have enough PPE? Was something that somebody mentioned. Another person mentioned that they want to see the city fight for them. Talking to Jody Shays from Queen B Salon, she said, you know, with her salon being closed for so long, all she really wanted is to feel like the city cared enough to reach out to her and say, how can we help you? And then give her, help give her business that push with the county and be that voice for them. So I think that's really what it comes down to is we need to do better at our conversations. We need to do better at listening and we need to go forward with things that are actually going to help these businesses. And the only way we can do that is by talking to them, not talking at them, not making plans that we think will benefit with them, just talking to them and asking.
Thank you very much. So the next couple of questions are under the category of taxes and finances. The first one will be for Daryl, Kin Kin, and Yoran. What is your position on Measure RE, which if passed would increase the city's property transfer tax from a base rate of 0.45% to a new range of 1.5 to 4%, the highest in the state? So we'll start with Daryl and then go to Kin Kin and Yoran.
Well, thanks, Colin. I do want to start by sort of correcting that description of Measure RE. Measure RE leaves the base rate at 0.45% for everything up to the first $1.5 million of sales. So it doesn't replace that rate, it leaves it in place. And that takes care of most home sales, the average home sales, I think 1.2 million. So the point of Measure RE, and I know this because I was on the Finance Advisory Committee and we looked at it and did recommend it in a rather quick fashion. The point of it was to make sure that some of the city finances came from those large corporations and large businesses that are coming flipping housing, buying property. You know, if you go to the store and you buy school supplies or you go buy a used car, you pay 10 and 1/4% sales tax. If you buy a $15 million building, not even 1%. There's got to be somewhere in the middle, especially when the city needs some funding. And the city surely is having trouble right now with its finances. So I did support Measure RE. My name is on the ballot, supporting the argument in favor of it. I know that's an unusual thing for someone running for office to want to do, to stand behind a tax measure. But I think it's important. I think it's progressive taxation and that's what I'd like to see more of because we have a tendency to pass sales taxes, which are very regressive, or parcel taxes where the Sony lot pays the same amount as your house. That's the sort of thing that needs to change. And if we're going to have funding for everything that the city needs to do, we need to take a look at sources of funding that don't fall all on homeowners and small businesses. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Kin Kin.
Thank you, Colin. I think that the Measure RE needs to be stratified further so that it will not adversely affect the mom and pops and the small businesses. I think that because when I look around on the crest, the average home is selling for 2 to 3 million after the McMansions have invaded the crest. So if you're going to levy taxes up to $3 million, you're really going to be hurting the mom and pops who are trying to downsize to a smaller place. And it's going to be affecting, negatively affecting their nest egg and pension, which they will need to rely on for the rest of their years. So I think a better way to address the city not having enough funds is to look into the possibility of selling bonds because mainly the city is triple A rating. Its credit is excellent. And I think that we have an investor class in the city that is always looking for something safe to invest in. And I think we can create a win-win situation for both the investor folks and the city by considering the selling of bonds, especially because the interest rates are extremely low at this juncture. And the feds have told us that they will not be raising interest rates anytime soon. So I think we ought to look at, into other avenues of raising funds for the city. So that's what I would advocate is that just don't be a one-trick pony. Look at other things that you can raise funds with for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Yoran?
Well, I'm on the record for actually voting against RE at the council meeting. And the reason for that was it was a rush job. It was sort of like a two and a half week process. And it was very limited resource because staff didn't really have time to calculate exactly what the effects would be and how it would work. This is a, we already have the highest transfer tax in the county today. We are at the top together with the LA County, 0.45. So now we actually increased it so it can be eight times higher than we had it, right? So we're going to be eight times higher than the, the one below us according to where the tax rates were when this was passed. So what would it do to someone that has a house? Well, if you have a house that's one and a half, worth one and a half million and up, this tax hits you with one and a half percent instead of 0.45 on the value above one and a half. And what consequences that have, I don't know because staff couldn't really, hadn't, didn't have time to figure it out. And when the Finance Advisory Committee got it, it was a false choice because they got a choice that you want us to have tax bracket at this level or you want us to have tax bracket at this level? The council's question to the Finance Advisory Committee was never, is this a tax you think is appropriate right now and, and where the economy is? So, so that was also odd. So it was a, it was a rush job and therefore it's not well-prepared. It's not, not well researched and it is eight, can be eight times higher than we currently have. So that's bad news, I think. You know, we need, we need to be better. We are better. We usually are very, very careful when we do these things. We research them, we poll, we do a lot of stuff. Here we did it in two and a half weeks. And it's, it's so out of the mainstream on this tax. And markets react to taxes. It's going to have an effect at some point, you, you know that. So, so I, I'm really concerned. So I will be voting no coming up in, in November. So thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question is for Freddie, Heather, and Robert. This is, what is your plan to address the city's finances moving forward without further burdening, burdening, excuse me, our local businesses who are struggling during the pandemic? And we'll start with Freddie, then go to Heather, then Robert.
Yeah, well, we are in the crisis of our time. And there's no silver bullet when it comes to getting out of this crisis. We don't know when it's gonna end. Innovation will be key. We're going to need to really rely on our networks and depending on each other to share resources and share tools and what they're doing that works. We must have, first thing we need to do is whenever we get federal dollars, that the, that the federal dollars go to smaller cities. And the first CARES package went to Los Angeles and then was asked to be distributed to smaller cities. So we need to make sure that that money is being directed. We need to advocate for our, to our regional, state, and federal partners for funding. We need renter assistance, rental assistance, and we need mortgage relief as well. I think that, yeah, and other than that, I think it's good to organize. I was talking to the Cultural Affairs Commission and looking at our creative economy and our smaller, our artists and our organizations and smaller businesses to really organize them so they have a block vote, so to speak, so they can advocate when we're looking at different things coming down the pike. It's exciting to have big corporations coming to the city in the future. We want to make sure that they have an opportunity to have a say, equal footing, equal say in what's going on and what's affecting their, the future. So it's going to be a lot of collaboration. We're going to have to, you know, really rely on the Economic Recovery Task Force. They're the eyes and ears for the city. They have the inside information to what's going on in the individual sectors. So this will be a crucial, crucial partnership. We have a great brain trust in Culver City. Over 50% of people have bachelor degrees, 25% have advanced degrees. And we can really rely on, you know, our internal community and really build community through this process. And I think that's what's going to really get us through is reliance on each other and really build society or our, our community, which everyone really appreciates in Culver City. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather?
Hey, Colin. When you were asking the question, part of it cut out on my end. Do you mind repeating it?
Sure. What is your plan to address the city's finances moving forward without further burdening our local businesses who are struggling during the pandemic?
So I think that holding off on the increase in business license tax is probably number one priority. I don't think it's a good time. I think that our businesses are going to be I don't think it's a good time. I think that our businesses are going to be struggling for the next couple of years. As far as our budget for the city, I think it's a matter of tightening our belt and re-examining what can move where, what's really needed, getting back to basics and building on from there. I think that's the most important tool that we have, is the power to reevaluate and to re-address some of these concerns. I'd also like to see more community input on the budget. I'd like to see the city council reach out to all members of the city to get input on it. I mean, we're going to have to do this together. Everyone's kind of in the same boat right now. Everyone's been affected by COVID, but we can't count on our businesses and our homeowners to bail us out every time. I think this comes down to what we can change and what we can do on our end to make our dollars stretch a little bit further.
Thank you very much. Robert, same question.
We have 39,000 people that live in our city, yet 400,000 people come into our city every day. This is pre-COVID. We've got over 1 million cars that pass through our city. This is a tremendous drain on our infrastructure. And I think that the big tech companies need to pay their fair share. I also think that we need to have a more open, business-friendly attitude for all small businesses to let them thrive and let them make the comeback so that they can bring in tax revenues. Also, I, I think that we need to explore different types of grants that are available, you know, because we're hurting, you know? And I think one of the main things we need to do is open up our city, especially take out all the restrictions against the small businesses, you know, keeping in mind that they, they practice social distancing and wear masks. And again, I think the big tech companies need to pay their fair share to cover all this extra, you know, infrastructure that, that's being used. You know, 39,000 people again live here, yet 400,000 people are using our facilities here. That's, I don't think that's fair. I think the, the, some of the costs should be spread around.
Thank you very much. The next question moves into police, which has been a topic of conversation the last few months in our community. This question is going to be for Yasmin, Daryl, and Robert. What is your stance on defunding the police? And if you are in favor, do you also support the 50% reduction in budget and 90-day timeline that some are seeking? So we'll start with Yasmin, and then we'll go to Daryl and Robert.
Interestingly, because my late father was a NORC police officer, I'm originally from New Jersey. So I grew up being around officers. My father was a member of the Fraternal Order of Police. So my view is definitely nuanced, but as a trained attorney and someone who is just, you know, aware of sort of the current climate and is listening to public comments and community members who are experiencing our city services in a way that is concerning, I think, to any community member. Because I think all of us here in Culver City have a certain expectation of how we'd like to be treated. And, you know, all of our taxpayer dollars are supporting our services proudly. And so, yes, my campaign is supporting 50% reallocation. And doing so, I would really like to model it after what we've already done with our school district. We took nine months to, we had a cross-section of folks, teachers, parents, students. So of course it would be different in this context. But we have a three-year plan, which has different outcomes. It's a livable document, so we're able to go back and edit it. But what I would really like to see is something like that as we approach looking at what our community needs. Because what we do know is that unfortunately, some folks are, are not feeling safe and are not safe. And that's incredibly important to me as a Black woman in particular, but just as a leader. I co-founded an organization, the Culver City Community of Color Collective in 2018, sort of to support families and children of color, because, you know, this has been going on. And it's not just policing, but it's an overall, you know, culture. And we want to make sure that we are showing up for all members of our community. We want to make sure that there's accountability and transparency. So this is just one way to do that, and I hope that all members of our community, including our police, can join us in being and having a community where everyone is safe and feels supported. That's the goal here. Thank you so much for the question.
Thank you. Daryl, same question.
Thank you. I know this has become a very emotional question in our city, in part because the whole defend or defund rhetoric is misleading and confusing and doesn't help people see what policy issues are really at stake. You know, around Memorial Day, as summer was starting, so many of us, including I think the entire city council and the police chief, were at rallies talking about Black Lives Matter. And that wasn't because nobody wanted change. There has to be some response to the justice problems that we see. You know, it doesn't matter if the number of unarmed black men dying is simply an accident. You can think that. But when our cars were unsafe, we thought we had seat belts and airbags, we made them safer, right? We have an obligation when we see injustice to do something about it. And I think that's what the Black Lives Matter movement was about, that's what it was about to me. And so we talk about, it's not about defunding, the numbers aren't actually the issue for me. I want to see policy changes that matter. I want to make sure that every member of our society, regardless of their background, feels as protected by the police as I do in my own home, as a white male. I want that to be true. I think that's a matter of justice and equity for us to do that. And we have a policy that the city has, I believe the city council unanimously put in place, to have a commission, a committee work with outside justice experts on criminal justice and systemic racism and so forth, to analyze policies and make recommendations. And I believe that our budget will flow from those recommendations. Calling it defunding, if it reallocates funds, I think is a very unhelpful way to think about it, because it makes people think that they're losing their, their police force. And whether you take a more bold approach, as Yasmin did, or perhaps a more of the approach that I do, it's all about making bold choices to make sure that everybody feels safe. And none of it has to do with taking away safety or abolishing the police department, at least I don't think it does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Robert, same question.
Yeah. Have you seen what happened to the police that were ambushed in Compton? Have you seen what happened in Portland and Seattle? This, the defunding, calling for defunding of the police is totally irresponsible. You know, our, again, I have said, our Culver City police saved our city millions of dollars by acting proactively to stop the rioters and looters that, you know, ravaged Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, and Hollywood. I think, like I said, Black Lives Matter, but why does that mean defunding the police? Black Lives Matter, I think we can all agree on that. What I don't understand is why supporting racial justice means defunding the police? Why does Black Lives Matter not only call for defunding the police, but abolishing them altogether? You know, if, if so, why does the Culver City Action Network call for 50% defunding of the Culver City Police Department? Why does the Black Lives Matter want to abolish the police altogether? Now, if you look and study their organization, they are, they are a Marxist organization, a hate group, and they are deluding a lot of people who have well intentions, you know? Basically, everybody agrees, Black Lives Matter, Blue Lives Matter, All Lives Matter. But they are being manipulated. It's like three, I've been to, I've been to these defund police rallies myself. I just wanted to see what was going on. I see idiot statements like, "white silence is violence." That is idiotic. Defending, you know, defunding the police is a slap in the face of our police department. They should be getting a bonus for saving our city. You know, like I said, 400,000 people come to Culver City every day. 90% of the crime is from outsiders outside of the city. We need a strong police force. We know, if, if you want to have other programs that you call for, fine, I'm for having other programs to help other people. But to handcuff our police and defund them is, you're asking for trouble, and it is irresponsible. Anybody who supports defunding, it should not be elected. That's why we need three pro-police council members to prevent the railroading of the defunding of our police. So I'm advocating that we find three, and I'm questioning, are there three council members who are supporting our police? I'm one of them. Who else is there?
Thank you for your responses. The next question is tied to business sentiment. This question will be for Freddie, Yoran, and Kenken. Do you see a perceived gap between businesses and residents in our city? If so, how do you plan to go about bridging or eliminating it? And we'll start with Freddie.
Yeah, I think that there is, whether it's real or perceived, but there is a gap in between city council and some small business owners. And the way to go through that is to communicate. I think that, you know, part of any type of relationship building or community building does involve reaching out, possibly doing surveys, and really asking what are the needs of the business community? They are the backbone of our economy. You know, Culver City brings in about 30% of our general fund revenue is from sales tax. So we want to really support, especially right now, our businesses. How do we, you know, act locally so we can heal globally? It's something that I really heard recently, and I really am going up, really trying to take this on and live this out. There's a couple of things that we can do, I think, that City Hall can do. I think it's good to, you know, take an audit of our services that the city provides for businesses. Maybe when they do, when you do, what do you call it, inspections, that it could be done virtually during the pandemic. Or there could be, you know, tidying it up and making all-in-one stop shop for permitting, getting your license. So it doesn't have to be going to different areas or having to wait to get this. Time is of the essence right now. We need to make sure that our businesses are getting what they need to do the things that they do, to provide food for our families, services, and everything that our small business community does. So again, relying on the, excuse me, the Economic Recovery Task Force to really, you know, how do we reach out and hear everything that's going on? Another thing is just, sometimes I think the business community, you know, measures that are going through or different taxes, having an open conversation. The business community may not approve of it, or there may be different ideas, but at least that communication of sharing the details of it, I think that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same question to Yoran.
Yeah, I think there is a perceived gap. I think it's actually generated for political purposes. Because when I was on the chamber board, going back to way back, I left the board in 2016, so I started in 2007 or something. At that time, more than half of the board members were small business owners, mid-sized business owners in Culver City, but they were also residents in Culver City. Their kids went to our school, they went and shopped and ate and so on. And, and it was used as a political wedge tool to, and create this, this conflict between the community and the nasty business, which is, in my mind, is not true at all. We have enormously committed businesses, and I don't think they really get the, the value. There still is, is forces in our town that prefer to vilify our business. And then we should know that more than 70% of the general fund is generated by or through our businesses. They are our bread and butter. They are the ones that keep our city going. And also, whenever we ask them to step up, whenever the, the school district or the Ed Foundation, or when we do Feed Culver, whenever we go and ask for money, they step up, they contribute. They actually contribute a lot. The groups that are complaining about the nasty vilify the business community, they usually don't contribute anything. So it is a political created sentiment. And I would really hope that we can get past that somehow, because we will need the business community when we get out of this COVID-19. And the business community will need the whole city, the city hall, the residents. This is going to be an enormous teamwork when we get out of this. So we need to figure out a way to get away from this political intentionally created conflict, because it is not there.
Thank you very much. And let's go to Kenken. Same question, please.
Thanks Colin. I, I think that we're in a new phase of city development where we are accommodating at least 5,000 techies coming to town, and we're only a population of 39,000 folks. So I've always felt that there was this need to create a needs assessment survey as to how our infrastructure would be impacted. How will it impact our school system? How will it impact our housing? And I think when we talk about housing in Northern California, we have models to follow. That is to say, the tech companies have actually collaborated with their municipalities in trying to create housing, new housing for their employees and workforce. So I think that's a model that we could adopt down here in Southern California. So I do feel that there might be a need for closer cooperation between the new tech companies coming into town and City Hall in general. And I think that we, we do need to connect more closely and intimately than we've done before. And transportation is a huge issue, because for one thing, it creates 60% of our air pollution, and everybody wants to raise their kids in a healthy, clean environment. So let's talk about it. I think that we can follow models established by other sister cities, such as the city of LA, that is trying to transition their natural gas-driven buses to electric buses. So I think we can make our air cleaner by transitioning our bus fleet to a cleaner set of electric buses and make the environment cleaner for everybody in general. I think we can also envision electric shuttles between far reaches of the city to connect to the two subway stations that are somewhat not as well-connected as they could be. So I think we can envision electric shuttles going from Fox Hills to the, the two subway stations, one at Robertson in Venice and the other one at La Sierra in Jefferson. So I think this is a time to create a lot of discussion, conversation. And this is an opportunity for folks to also come to the table with their new ideas. The tech companies have been very creative in innovating how their employees can work from home. And if they continue this trend, we may not have to deal with so much congestion in terms of traffic or impact on our housing stock as well. So I think conversation, conversations need to take place, and closer participation should be invited from these communities so that we can all come up with better solutions to this crucible of a crisis that we're all facing at all levels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question is going to be for Heather, Yasmin, and Daryl. This is in regards to the other local measure. So what is your position on Measure B, which if passed would require any interim or permanent local rent control programs to be approved by a vote of the people rather than the decision of a seated council? So we'll start with Heather, then we'll go to Yasmin, and then Daryl.
Thanks Colin. I am in favor of Measure B for releasing
I am in favor of Measure B for a really simple reason. I think that leaving the power to the people for this is a really great thing. I think that, no matter which side you're on, councils flip and they change. So the ability to have this done by the people to vote for what they want to see in a rent control measure, whether it be interim or permanent, is a good idea. I think that if the council was to flip and it was repealed on some level, it would be tragic. I think that leaving this to the people is just the smartest way to go. It's a great form of representative government. What better way to do this than leaving it to the people? So my answer is a simple yes.
Thank you. Yasmin?
Thank you for the question, Colin. As a former renter, I recently became a homeowner, actually during this pandemic time. But also, as a former renter, as a member of Protect Culver City Renters, and I helped to co-author one of the No on B ballot measure sections, because I firmly believe that housing is a human right. Culver City did not have renter protections until 2019. I was afraid to speak out because of fear of retaliation or whatever, what happened to my daughter and I, which is a real fear, or was a real fear for many renters. And, you know, as an attorney and, you know, someone working at a C, you know, anything could happen. You could be evicted for any reason at all. So I believe we have elections every two years, typically issues that happen with renters or anything that might come up. That's a long waiting period. And these folks, we need a critical, there's so much back and forth from staff. You know, Protect Culver City Renters has given specific notes. We've spoken with housing advocates, tenants' rights organizations, because there's so much nuance that it's difficult for the average layperson to really understand all of the nuance that goes into the rent control provisions. But we know at the end of the day, we need these provisions. We are voting no on B. B is bad. We want to support renters, who are really the crux of the diversity in Culver City. So I enthusiastically encourage the viewers here to vote no on B. We want to make sure that folks can stay in their homes, specifically during a pandemic. And we are really risking a lot of harm to a vulnerable population if this passes. So enthusiastically no on B. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. And Daryl?
Yeah, so thanks for the question. I am opposed to Measure B. I think it's just bad policy. I mean, let's start out by looking at what it is. Measure B is not neutral. What it does is it retroactively repeals all the rent control that we've had in this city from January 1st, 2019 on forward. So it's not neutral. It actually repeals what we have. And this creates a lot of confusion. If it's been repealed, can the landlord go back to retroactively raise the rent? Can you get evicted for non-payment of rent under terms that would have been illegal? That's kind of a mess, frankly. And it also is bad policy, because it ties the hands of city council in dealing with any measure going forward. There's no flexibility possible when you have to do detailed legislation at the ballot box. You know, detailed legislation at the ballot box is a mistake. Whenever we do it, we end up with laws with unintended consequences. And one of the things in a small city like this, with five elected at-large city council members, is we have the ability to look at legislation, to adapt it, to fix it, and to make sure that everything is taken care of properly. This sort of big swipe that pretends to be neutral but is really wiping rent control off the board is going to hamstring the city. It causes bad policy, and I oppose the measure.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for the answers that you've given. As I mentioned at the kind of top of this, that you all would be given kind of two minutes as a final closing statement. If you, there was a question that was asked of another candidate that you didn't get a chance to answer, and you'd like to during your two minutes, please feel free to. We're going to try to work in reverse order. So we'll start this time around with Robert, then, or actually, sorry, Kinkin, Heather, then Robert. So Kinkin, your two minutes begins now.
Okay, closing statement. Thank you, Colin. As a graduate of UCLA Extensions Sustainability Certificate Program, I am qualified to facilitate green jobs for the city that won't exacerbate climate change. As an example, the UCLA Luskin School of Public Policy did a study with the L.A. Business Council, and they found that this program would create more than 11,000 green jobs. That this is the Solar Feed and Tariff Program, or the FIT Program. They found that this program would create more than 11,000 green jobs in the L.A. Basin, nearly triple the number of jobs that LADWP had created in the region through green programs to date. As a small business owner, I am sensitive to the challenges that small businesses face, and I will advocate for our communal success. As a member of the Committee on Homelessness, I will strive to find safe parking spaces for the majority of the homeless in Culver City living out of their cars, trucks, and trailers. We need to be talking beyond equity and inclusivity. We must also push the envelope with data-driven decisions and best practices methodology to solve the problems of the city to the best of our ability. Thank you very much, and I hope you'll vote for me in November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Heather, then Robert.
Thank you, Colin, and thank you to the chamber for hosting this important forum. Businesses are the backbone of our city economy, so this forum is all too poignant, especially during COVID. I just want to reiterate, my focuses are to ensure that the police and fire departments have what they need to keep our residents and our businesses safe. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Police Officers Association, and I feel that defunding the police by fifty percent, or any program for that matter, for fifty percent, just as out the gate, is completely irresponsible and uncalled for. I want to see our businesses thrive. I want to see our city grow. But most importantly, I want us to have city council members that don't have agendas, that will listen to the people, that will do what needs to be done in order to make the city better. I would invite anybody that has any further questions to visit my website, my Facebook page, call me, email me. I'm very responsive. I'm always here to listen and to learn from other residents as well. So with that being said, I do go live on Facebook on Wednesdays from 3:30 to 4:00, and I do a small business Saturday. Usually, I'll announce what time beforehand, because businesses have different times that they're available. But please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you so much, Colin.
Thank you. Robert?
Thanks again for hosting the forum. You know, some people say that I'm a one-issue candidate because I emphasize my support for the police and firefighters. I do believe there are other important issues. But however, I think the issue of defunding the police is a litmus test for who should be in office. If someone is so irresponsible to defund our police, what other issues will they have that are as irrational and irresponsible as defunding our police? You know that one of the reasons why people come to Culver City is because they feel safe, you know? And why do they feel safe? It's because we have a great police department that responds within three minutes. Nobody wants to go to, you know, in Los Angeles, what is the response time? It's crazy. People come to Culver City. It's important. They're the linchpin. The police and firefighters are the linchpin of our community that make everything possible in Culver City. It's, people want to feel safe. Do you want another Portland? Do you want another Seattle? That's what's going to happen if you have irresponsible people calling for the defunding of our police. And what I can't stand is the demeaning of our police. All these actions that have happened to the police in other cities that has nothing to do with Culver City police. Now, this group called CCAN is going around saying, trying to defame a police officer, Luis Martinez, who was, who shot a man who had a gun, who robbed a store. And they're trying to defame this man. And I think it's totally irresponsible to demean, defame our police. We need to support our police. We need to give them a bonus for saving us millions of dollars that could have happened. It's a small price to pay to give our police an extra bonus. And that's why I am emphasizing this issue, because this is the litmus test. Do you want another Portland or Seattle and have irresponsible government that has caused what's happened there? And if you elect people who are against the police, then that is what you are asking and inviting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go, we'll go Yoran, Daryl, Freddie, and then we'll round it out with Yasmin. And you're muted.
Thank you, everyone. I had a great time talking about the issues facing our city tonight. Starting, I count as your council member, these past four years have been an absolute honor, and I'm running for reelection because I want to continue my work to improve Culver City. This is an unprecedented time in our city's history. And as I mentioned before, business recovery during the COVID-19 pandemic, attainable housing, and economic development are critical issues facing our city. We need to address the problems at hand with practical, effective solution that will improve the lives of our residents and business owners in Culver City. As your council member and mayor, financial responsibility, public safety, and sustainability have always been my top priority. And I have a track record of measured, steady leadership on these issues. I hope the past four years I have earned your trust. And as an example, when I came on council, I suggested that we should move over our national gas buses to renewable natural gas, which we did. And that is actually cheaper than the fossil-fuel gas. Not only that, we have, since that's what implemented on my suggestion, we have removed 36,000 metric ton of carbon from Culver City's air. I'm a practical person. I find the solutions that actually can be implemented and have a direct impact on how we work. So once again, thank you, everyone, who organized this tonight. And I'm looking forward to hearing more of your ideas about the future of Culver City.
Thank you very much. Daryl?
Well, thank you again to the chamber for this amazing opportunity and forum, and for all the, what is it, some 70 people who have taken time out of their day to listen to this. It's just wonderful to see that sort of interest in the city. You know, everyone knows this is a big election for our country and for our city. The stakes really couldn't be higher on November 3rd. We need federal aid for our cities and our schools after these budget cuts. This administration refuses, says cities should go bankrupt. And I disagree. We can't borrow money for operating costs. And when you have an emergency, sometimes you need to be ready to take bold action. I'm in this race because I think Culver City needs to come together. I know that not everyone will agree with me about every policy, but that's okay. I'm ready to talk, to listen, to learn. That's the only way you really do learn. An election isn't really about necessarily just the policies you see. It's about who you trust for all the questions that are going to come up that we don't know about yet, you know, for the pandemic that you can't imagine. I hope I can demonstrate that I'm worthy of that trust. You know, the best response to incompetent federal government is good, competent, responsive local government that proves that our democratic institutions work and that our values should carry the day. Culver City may not be big, but there's nothing small about Culver City. Amazon Studios, HBO, Apple, Sony, they're all here. NPR is here. The world sees us. We do matters. They used to say California is where the future happens first. Well, Culver City is where California happens first. I believe in this. I believe in a vision of united community. And I do believe I have the background and the experience to help lead this city forward together. So I ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Freddie?
Thank you, everyone, for your time today. I really appreciate it. It's been a great opportunity to hear more about the issues that people care about and what people are thinking about. It's so great to go to these candidate forums. I learned so much more about all of our residents. I'm ready now to serve as one of the next Culver City council members. My experience and background have prepared me well for this role. I'm a listener and a respectful communicator who's not afraid to take action. I'm curious about other people's thoughts and opinions on issues. I value people and their thoughts. I've had experience navigating change in institutional settings. My greatest strength is that I'm a connector, and I build strong relationships. As a community connector, I am constantly in the neighborhood working on projects and initiatives. I bring people together to have difficult conversations and to accomplish goals. And I do this all through the lens of equity. One of the best lessons I learned was from my dad. He passed away earlier this year, and we could not have any more different opinions about the world and how to solve problems. But what we did care about is we wanted the best for the cities that we live in and the countries we live in. He taught me how to value and really listen to the other side, and also to listen to the voices that aren't being, that weren't being vocalized or spoken during our conversations. I think that's so important to incorporate all voices and those that are not traditionally heard. At LMU, I'm an implicit bias instructor. I led LGBTQ faculty and staff network for five years. I was staff senate president. And I co-started an anti-racist group for white faculty, staff, and faculty members. We can feel the energy in the air. There's so much passion on these issues. And I really think it's a skill set to harness this creativity, harness this energy to make Culver City even better, a model city that others will look to. And I hope to earn your vote, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Yasmin?
Thank you again to the chamber and to you, Colin, for moderating, for hosting this event, and for allowing us time to speak and share with your members. So again, my name is Yasmin E. Moni-McQuine. It's been wonderful having this conversation with you all this evening. I always say, I never thought I would run for office. It wasn't something that was on my radar. But I'm so incredibly glad that someone asked me to consider it, and that I did, because it matters so deeply who represents us and the lens that they have. And as someone who is a single parent, someone who is an attorney, someone who's experienced housing insecurity, someone who cares deeply about transit and our environment, not just for us, but for my daughter and should she decide to have children, I really have skin in the game, and I'm really passionate about this city. And I want us to succeed and thrive. I'm really proud of the work that we get to do on the general plan, which has us really reimagining and thinking about what this city could be that will serve all of us, including, of course, our small businesses and business community. So with that being said, I just want to share that I have been endorsed by our Congresswoman Karen Baris and our state senator, Holly Mitchell. I'm incredibly grateful to have supportive leaders who I deeply admire and who do great work for us on the federal and the state level. And, you know, I hope you consider supporting me as we meet this moment as a city, as we go beyond surviving and hopefully to thriving. And I look forward to being in partnership with you. Again, I always say I know what I know, and I know what I don't know. So I look forward to being accountable to this community. Please, if you'd like, you're more than welcome to reach out. Again, my website is votemcmoran.com. And if you'd like to shoot me an email, it's votemcmoran@gmail.com. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I hope you and yours are safe and well. Thank you.
Once again, thank you all, to all the candidates that were able to join us tonight for taking out the time and for crafting your responses to these topics that I think are not only important today, but moving forward. For all of you that took time out to attend and spend the last 90 minutes with us, we hope that you were able to gain some insight into the candidates and encourage you all to go out and vote on November 3rd, if not sooner, by mail.